I'd like to call this December 4th, regular council meeting and work session to order. Would everybody please rise for a moment of silence? And let's remember all those who passed away during the month. Please salute the flag.
I salute the flag of the United States of America and the people for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Gill, you want to do a roll call, please?
Mr. Pezzic.
Here.
Ms. Cohen.
Here.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Cousins.
Here.
Ms. Figaro.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Petrocin.
Here.
Mr. Hugues.
Here.
So at this time, like we do every year, over the last twenty-some years that I've been here, we are honored to have Rosemary Mignoni Stutsky to come in and sing some Christmas carols. So at this time, let's welcome Rosemary.
Christmas is coming, the roost is getting fat. Please put your penny in that old man's hat. Please put your penny in that old man's hat. If you haven't got a penny, a half penny will do. If you haven't got a half penny, then God bless you. Thanks so very much for inviting me back here tonight. Sorry, I'm keeping this late. And as I speedily bring up the steps, you saw that Christmas tree at the bottom. You see the beautiful garden along with the stairs going up. And this is a beautiful place to do our Dona Day. We should be so proud of this building and all the people here. So can you join me if you have a paper and a rose to do with "Deck the halls!" Deck the halls with bells of holly! Fa la 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 la, la 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 la. 'Tis the season to be jolly! Fa la 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 la, la 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 la. Don we now our gay apparel! Fa la 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 la, la 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 la. O'er the ancient yuletide carol! Fa la 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 la, la 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 la. See the blazing yule before us! Fa la 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 la, la 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 la. Startle your harp and join the chorus! Fa la la la, fa la la la. Follow me in merry measure! Fa la 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 la, la 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 la. While we tell all yuletide treasure! Fa la la la, la 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 la. That's the way we the old year passes! Fa la la la, la 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 la. Hail the new year's lights and lasses! Fa la la la, la 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 la. Sing we joyous all together! Fa la la la, la 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 la. Heed this of the wind and weather! Fa la la la, fa la la la. Now, another song that is very popular, and it's a song that was actually written for children for their Christmas, no, excuse me, their Thanksgiving pageant that they were doing. In a school, a schoolteacher wrote this for the children to perform to their parents. And this is always near and dear to my heart because you know, I am a schoolteacher. I will always be a schoolteacher, even if I retire. So will you sing with me? Dashing through the snow in a one-horse open sleigh o'er the fields we go, laughing all the way! Bells on bobtails ring, making spirits bright! What fun it is to ride and sing a sleighing song tonight! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride; and soonest Danny Bright was seen by my side. The horse was lean and lank; Miss Fortune saved his lot; we ran into a drifted bank, and there we got up shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! Now, not often does this happen, but the Julian calendar, that's the calendar that most of the world uses, and the Hebrew calendar coincide with two special holidays. On the day that we call Christmas, they will begin their Hanukkah celebration. And it doesn't happen very often that they call it Sigh. So a dreidel is a little top. It's four-sided and has four deep blue letters on it. And when you spin it, it's a game that the children play so that they can get their Hanukkah money. Usually it's those of old chocolates that we all love so much. And this song is about having a dreidel and playing the game. I have a little dreidel; I made it out of clay; and when it's dry and ready, that dreidel I shall play. Oh, dreidel, dreidel, dreidel; I made it out of clay; and when it's dry and ready, that dreidel I shall play. It has a lovely body, with legs so short and thin; and when my dreidel's tired, it dries and then I win. Oh, dreidel, dreidel, dreidel; I made it out of clay; and when it's dry and ready, then dreidel I shall play. My dreidel's always playful; it loves to dance and spin. A happy day, oh dreidel, come play now, let's begin! Oh, dreidel, dreidel, dreidel; I made it out of clay; and when it's dry and ready, then dreidel I shall play. One of the most songs to put in different languages is actually "Silent Night." According to some records, it is the most translated song in the world. You can sing it in any language, from the ancient languages to English. So will you join me in singing this song? Silent night, holy night! All is calm, all is bright; round young virgin, mother and child; holy infant, so tender and mild; sleep in heavenly peace, sleep in heavenly peace. Silent night, holy night! Shepherds wait at the sight; glory streams from heaven afar; and the host sings, "Hallelujah!" Christ the Savior is Lord, Christ the Savior is Lord. Silent night, holy night! Son of God, love's pure light; raviness streams from thy holy face; with our dawn of redeeming grace; Jesus born and thy birth; Jesus born and thy birth. Now, if you haven't gone down Rattle Street, things are popping up all over. About twelve different things, in fact, because there's several blocks, six blocks on Rattle Street, on both sides, that are, that the families and the residents are putting out what they consider the twelve days of Christmas. And so, we're not going to sing all twelve. But, you know, everybody knows about the partridge, the two turtle doves, three French hens. They're my favorite so far, by the way, if you haven't seen them on Rattle. We're calling Birds by Golden Rings. Another one of my favorites. You know why? Because we used to have to sing "Five golden rings bought by Mignoni Jewelry." "Six geese a-laying," "Seven swans a-swimming," "Eight maids a-milking," "Nine ladies dancing," "Ten lords sleeping," "Eleven pipers piping," and twelve drummers drummers. Yummy. Now, if you bought all those gifts at today's price, this is right off the internet this morning, you would have to spend forty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-three and some change. What went up? Well, I personally thought it was going to be the golden rings because I know gold prices went up a great deal. But they didn't. What the biggest increase was, was hiring the ten lords a-leaping for thirteen thousand and change. Can you imagine that? The second highest was the swans. I guess you can't get seven swans a-swimming all in a row and do it without an increase. So from next year to this year, it was about a five percent increase. So we all know about the situation. But if you haven't seen Rattle Street in the next few days, go down and see it, especially the three French hens. You're going to love it. Now, one of the songs that is sung in Bristol, and it's kind of a fun song because it came from, as we know, we're all immigrants. And the immigrants brought all their songs and their traditions with them. And when my grandmother and grandfather came from Italy, they sang this song to us. And then, when you joined Saint Anne's Choir, you had to learn this song. And then, we passed it off to Saint Mark's Spanish Choir because of the beautiful Anna Mancini, who passed away just a few years ago. And she brought it with her because, although she was Italian, she sang in the Spanish choir. And the song is "Tu chef de la Scala," when Christ came down to earth. Tu chef de la Scala, al freddo cielo; e vii una prota, al freddo cielo. E vii una prota, al freddo cielo. Oh, bambino mio, ti vidi, io te prego, che io te voglio; oh, dio di Dio, oh, quando di costo, lo vero mato; oh, quando di costo, lo vero mato. When Christ came down to earth, that blessed Christmas morn; so gayly shone the stars, so beautifully bright; so gayly shone the stars, so beautifully bright; near every posse, zina posse, oh, blessed Mary of Lathrim; the bride is so rich and smart; sent out its race of far, two holy wise men forth; sent out its race of far, two holy wise men forth. Another song that I always like to dedicate to the men and women who will be working during the Christmas holiday season in harm's way, our soldiers, our policemen, our fire people, our EMTs, all of them come at a moment's notice. And when we think about them, it's night after night. One of the songs that I know that we'll always sing when we have celebrations for the people who service us is "Let There Be Peace on Earth." Now, song in your favor, if I could, for you. Let there be peace on earth, and let it begin with me. Let there be peace on earth, the peace that was meant to be. With God as our Father, brothers all are we. Let me walk with my brother in perfect harmony. Let be speaking with me; let this be a moment now. Within every step I take, let this be my solemn vow. So you take each moment and live each moment in peace eternally. Let there be peace on earth, and let it begin with me. Another favorite song of celebrating through the world is "Joy to the World." So could you join me, please? Joy to the world, the Lord is come; let every sheep her King; let every heart prepare him room; and heaven, nature sing; and heaven, nature sing; and heaven, and nature sing. He rules the world with truth and grace; and sings the nations' groan. The glory of his righteousness; and wonders of his love; and wonders, wonders of his love. Now, my most favorite song to sing here in this chamber is There was Dasher and Dancer and Prancer and Vixen; Comet and Cupid and Donner and Glicksen; but do you recall the most famous reindeer of all? Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer.
Reindeer.
Had a very shiny nose.
Shiny nose.
And if you ever saw it.
Saw it.
You and he could say it glows.
It glows.
All of the other reindeer.
Reindeers.
Used to let it call good names.
Pinocchio.
They never let or Rudolph.
Rudolph.
Join in any reindeer games.
Reindeer games.
Then one funny Christmas Eve, Santa came to say. Your best stand of voices? Rudolph, with your nose so bright; won't you guide my sleighs in night? Then how the reindeer loved him.
Loved him.
As he shouted out with glee.
With glee.
Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer.
Reindeer.
You'll go down in history.
History. Right, now I'm pretty bad, but I got about six people texting. Thought I wasn't singing tonight. I didn't want to let them down.
We always like to surprise.
Yeah, okay.
We wish you a Merry Christmas! We wish you a Merry Christmas! We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year! We want some figgy pudding! We want some figgy pudding! We want some figgy pudding and a cup of good cheer! We won't go until we get some! We won't go until we get some! We won't go until we get some, so bring it out here! We wish you a Merry Christmas! We wish you a Merry Christmas! We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year!
As always. As always, thank you.
Always.
Okay, we're going to run through this meeting quick. Mayor, what do you have?
Only thing I have is on your agenda, you see a motion to accept the resignation letter from our emergency management coordinator, Merle Winslow. I just want to briefly give the public a history of Merle and his service to Bristol Borough. So Merle joined the Bristol Consolidated Fire Department back in nineteen sixty-four after graduating Bristol High School. And then he then went on to work for U.S. Steel. He was then drafted to the U.S. Army in November of sixty-five, going to Germany as a Morse code radio operator. Most kids probably don't even know what that is these days. He served two years in Germany and was promoted to a sergeant E5 and discharged back to Fort Hamilton in New York. He was asked to be the Borough Fire Inspector from nineteen sixty-seven to nineteen sixty-nine, and then Bristol Borough Fire Marshal from nineteen seventy to nineteen seventy-seven after the Borough Fire Marshal Wilbur Albright retired. In nineteen ninety-five, he became the Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator to Dennis Crilly. And then in two thousand and three, when Dennis Crilly can no longer do the job, Mayor Saxon asked Merle if he'd be interested in being the Emergency Management Coordinator, in which he currently serves until the end of this year. He also was three years of our Fire Inspector, eight years of our Fire Marshal, nine years Deputy Coordinator, twenty years our Emergency Management Coordinator, and sixty years firefighter in Bristol Borough. Merle. I just want to finish by saying that, you know, some people, you know, we all call ourselves Bristolians and we know a lot of quote-unquote legends and icons in this town. But Merle, you really epitomize what it means to be a volunteer, a Bristolian, and a legend in this community. So thank you very much.
Okay. Anybody in council have anything they have in terms of public participation? Anybody have anything they want to discuss? Okay, so anybody here in the public want to discuss anything? That ends public participation. So we have two presentations tonight. One to, it's going to be presented to Betty and Lee since it's your award by State Senator Steve Santicero and Tina. I don't know who's coming up with checks and whatever you want to say. And then one to the mayor for the fire company. Okay, Bob, I don't know if these are all coming up or what yous want to do, but you're all, everybody's welcome.
So, good evening, everyone. First of all, another round of applause for Merle. Thank you for your service. And as well as another round for Rose. That was beautiful, did a wonderful job. And for Ralph, because that was really, that was something else. You did a great job. Did you guys rehearse that or not? So Tina Davis and I, and of course Commissioner Harvey as well, are very happy to be here this evening. I always love coming to this historic building and this historic chamber. I want to thank Ralph, I want to thank mayor and all council for the work you do for the people of Bristol Borough, year in, year out. It shows, obviously, what a wonderful community this is. That was evident at the parade just this last weekend. And although I was up in Doylestown for the tree lighting and parade there on Friday night, I understand, once again, you had a wonderful turnout here. And again, it's, it's, great communities just don't happen. They take a lot of hard work and dedication. So thank you for what you do. It is an honor for Tina and me to have secured some grant funding for the borough. And we have, we have our Ed McMahon checks here tonight. I'm dating myself, for those who remember. But these are for projects. The first one for the Adams Hollow Creek Flood Mitigation Project, which is obviously very important, particularly as we see more of these flood events happening. So that one was in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. And we're happy to present that tonight. And the second, in the amount of seven hundred thousand dollars, is for the consolidation of the fire. Uh, well, it's Christmas. We'll have to ask the governor about that. But this is for the consolidation of the fire station. And I just want to say, again, very important for public safety, but also ultimately for the taxpayer as well. And so we're proud to support that too. And I want to thank Governor Shapiro, obviously, as well for his support for these projects.
You know, I just want to add that the Borough Council and the mayor were so willing to work with the fire companies. And that was a big deal to actually get this money because if you guys weren't doing that, we wouldn't be able to get this money. So thank you. And to the mayor.
Well, first and foremost, thanks to both you, you know, Tina and Steve, for everything they do for Bristol Borough. I mean, this is just one of many checks they present to our community. We recently had a presentation over at the Bristol High School track where we're going to get the track resurfaced, thanks to them. But this is a great step forward in our consolidation and getting our new firehouse built. And we couldn't do it without you. So thank you for everything.
Okay. Moving along with the agenda. We'll go right to number two on the agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to accept the resignation letter from Merle Winslow, Emergency Management Coordinator, received November 18, 2024. Oh, I'm so, I am so sorry. I don't know what I did. Don't mind me.
Mr. President, just before we move on, I think I misunderstood. Were we, so going around council, we were done with that?
Yes.
Yeah, just very quickly. I'm sorry, I didn't realize. I didn't realize that that's what you meant earlier. I won't be long. I just wanted to recognize, because of the tree lighting that we had on Friday night, which was, I thought, a fantastic success. And there was a lot of people, a whole lot of people there. I again want to thank Merle Winslow, who is there every single time, just waiting in the wings. And Merle, I think I'm gonna announce right now that you're gonna light the tree next year. I know you've done it before, but the chief did a great, well-deserved job this year as well. And we would love to have you come back and not be working when you get to light that tree. So. And I also wanted to thank the committee that put it together. That is Carlos Sloan, Angelo Grisalia, Lee Karen, and Bill Pezza, Craig Whitaker, and Alan Hermley, who really helped pull that all off. And, you know, when you're standing up there until you see the overhead views of those drones or those balcony sites, you don't realize how many people are there. And man, there was a lot of people there. So, really fantastic event. It's always so fun to be in the borough this weekend especially. I also wanted to apologize to Commissioner Harvey. I said it to him. I did not realize he was there when we were, when we were, you know, recognizing our dignitaries that were there. So Commissioner Harvey was there, and we appreciate you being there. And I apologize for not recognizing that. And then at the end, I just want to say, as we approach Christmas, I hope we can have a time of introspection and reconciliation here in town. Not only is that in the spirit of Christmas, but this town is better for it when we move forward in that light. So as friends, as families, and as community leaders, I think we can look at that and think about how we can all do better moving forward. Thank you.
Can I say something? I also want to thank Merle for his dedication to our town. And personally called Merle for many things. And he's always been right on top of everything. And I'm really gonna be very sad to have you go. I also want to talk about the tree lighting. I wanted to thank the Rosen family for the tree, the borough crew for decorating the tree, which I thought they did a phenomenal job. Everyone's talking about our tree. And we also enjoyed that night so much. Even though it was cold, nobody was complaining. Everybody was there, and it was a lot of fun. Greg, I want to thank you also for coordinating it. And then I want to talk about our parade. Want to thank Merle for that as well. And I was so happy to see Tina Davis there and Bob Harvey there. And Fitzpatrick was there. We all, we, oh, I'm sorry. Okay. And we all walked. Steve was there, of course. Yes, Steve Santisaro. So I also, I wanted to say that we all walked together and we had an enjoyable day. My grandson walked with me. I was thrilled to have him there. And Craig Whitaker for the music that you supplied for us. It was Ralph's idea. And Steve Wade for driving the truck. And especially Ellen Skinsella for putting the parade together. This is one of the best holidays. And in our town, we do it the best of anybody. So I'm very proud of that. Thank you.
Where are you at, anything? Nothing for it.
No. Just want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And be safe.
Yes. This Saturday, the 7th, the Bristol Rotary will have breakfast with Santa at the Snyder's Garage School. And it's, there's no charge. It's a free event. And from 8 o'clock until 11:30. And Bristol students, children, and their parents were guardians. And I want to thank Merle. I go back to the early '60s with Merle when we played in the band together at the high school. And he's been a friend ever since. And he was, doesn't do, you know, goes above and beyond for everything. I got a call one day, I was out of town, and he said, you know, the river's coming up. And this is when the river didn't go over the banks too often. And I wasn't there. He went and found my kids and got them to move stuff out of my garage up to the high point. And I thought, who else does something like that? Except Merle, he does it every day for anybody in town. So again, Merle, thank you very much. And we'll still be looking out for you because we know you looked out for us for a long time. Thank you.
Lee. I'll keep on short. And usually I'm wrong with it, but I'll keep. But I want to dovetail off of what we said earlier. I believe all dignitaries present for the tree lighting and also the parade that has been discussed. And I mean, there's a lot of things that go on behind the scenes that people don't see that bring these things to light, like the tree lighting and the parade and things like that. There's a lot of effort behind the scenes. And those that were responsible for that have been, have been, no, you know, you've been, good job. The people. Man, so we talk about the people. On Mill Street, I saw the drone shot. It was on the tree lighting. I couldn't believe the sea of people that were out there on that street. I mean, the sea of people. And when you're in it, you don't really realize it. Which, to be honest with you, they said it was cold that night, nobody felt it. No, it was a lot of heat out there, a lot of body heat. There's a lot of people out there, you know, there's a lot of energy out there. And, I mean, even the parade, I mean, there's a lot of people that showed up for the parade. So here's my thing. When the people that come out en masse in that way, that means you're doing something right. If you're doing something wrong, people aren't gonna show up. When you're doing something right, people are going to show up, and they will show up en masse. So the people who have been named behind the scenes, out front and center, you have done an amazing job. Why the people showed you? The people showed you. So I want to think the people were coming out, having a good time. Everybody had a great time. And, I mean, I know I did. I mean, the tree lighting and the parade, handing out candy and trying to catch up to where I was supposed to be. I don't know anything, but it was fun. But the people, they came out en masse. Why? Because they believe in something. If they don't believe in it, they don't show up. So thank you for everyone who did everything behind the scenes, out front and center to make this possible for Bristol Borough. It was awesome. So that's all I have.
I'm sorry to interrupt, I just forgot to mention, although Lee wasn't on the committee, Lee came out at 3 o'clock to help set up for the tree lighting. And we were on ladders and cold and screwing things in. He was a big help, so I thank you, Lee.
Stop.
All right.
Merle, I've been here over 20 years, and I just want to thank you for being my friend. Anytime I needed anything, I called you. You were there. You took care of things for us. And we're very honored to have had you for so long. And also thank you to everyone that had a great weekend. This town is just doing its thing. And if you haven't seen how well we're doing, then you're not out there. I couldn't be out there for personal reasons, but I'm telling you, I've seen it from the beginning to now, and it's just getting better. And this council is just the best I've seen. So thank you, Ralph, and thank you, everyone. And thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Dillon. And let's just keep doing our thing. Happy holidays.
Okay. Merle, did you tell everybody, December 31st, your number won't work anymore?
You said I could still call you.
We're still gonna call you.
Nah, he's changed it, his number. Okay, number two on the agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Borough Council minutes for 11/11/24, approve the treasurer's report for September and October of 2024, approve the public works report for November of 2024, and approve the engineering report for December of 2024.
By a second. Second by Mr. Figaro. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number three.
Mr. President, I'd like to accept the resignation letter from Merle Winslow, Emergency Management Coordinator. We will miss you, but I love you. Received November 18, 2024.
Second by Mr. Getero. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number four.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the 2025 municipal budget.
Second by Mr. Cousin. Question or comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number five.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance establishing the tax rates for the 2025 fiscal year.
Second by Mr. Pezz. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance imposing assessment for the removal of garbage and refuse within Bristol Borough for the year 2025.
Second by Ms. Robbery. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number seven.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve Borough Solicitor to Petition Court for the additional five mills for 2025 general fund budget.
Second by Mrs. Figaro. Questions or comments?
I just want to say what I say every year, and that is, this is not a tax increase. This is something we've done for the last number of years that we just have to do by law.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number eight.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept Fred Bean's offer of $12,000 for the borough police chief's used car.
Second by Mr. Figaro. Questions or comments? This is on the estate bid list that Mr. Blake came in. And we went out twice with this, right?
Well, yeah, you did all the requirements. You had no bidders, so you can then sell it to a third party.
Right. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to appoint A.J. D'Angelo as Bristol Borough's Emergency Management Coordinator.
Second by Mr. Pezz. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have a solicitor just has a.
I just want to make a note for the record that the council met executive session for approximately 30 minutes prior to this meeting, discussing collective bargaining issues and other personnel matters. No action will be taken at this meeting.
Okay, before we.
I'd like to thank Bob, Tina, and Steve for joining us tonight. We really appreciate your color.
I thought you said you were gonna keep it short. I, I'm remiss. Ms. Minyon, thank you for coming in here, giving us a history lesson on those Christmas songs. I'm gonna tell you, educate you every year. And being a fellow educator who worked with you for a number of years, I know your heart is. Thank you for coming out and doing that. Appreciate you. Appreciate you.
First of all, I didn't know you were still here.
Kurt's hiding. She's hiding behind Kurt.
As Lee said, thank you as always. Before we adjourn, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a healthy and happy New Year. And God bless everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.